Good evening, council staff and guests. My name is Mike Remington, Mayor Pro Tem with the City of Duval. Mayor Okerlander will be joining us and guiding our meeting at about 7:30 this evening. And with that, I will call our meeting to order. This is the City of Duval City Council Meeting for May 4th, 2021. It's now 7:01 PM. With that, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brudnicki.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag. Councilmember Napland. Oh, she's here. You just muted yourself. Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jody. This evening's additions or corrections to the agenda, please add under consent payroll for April 20th, 2021 in the amount of forty-four thousand sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Payroll for May 5th, 2021 in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. And claims for April 20th, 2021 through May 4th, 2021 in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and four cents. Underscheduled items this evening, if there are no objections from council, we will simply have a mayor provide mayor's report when she arrives. Are there any concerns with that? Not seeing any. Under unfinished business, remove item two, Agenda Bill 21-13D. That's the Westcott Duval Village Commercial Application Extension. Are there any council members who would like to speak this evening? Councilmember McHenry. Not seeing any others. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Councilmember.
I can't, Councilmember Hoag.
Oh. We have a motion made by Councilmember McHenry, seconded by Councilmember Hoag. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Do we have a second?
Second, Councilmember Hoag.
We have a motion by Councilmember McHenry, seconded by Councilmember Hoag. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to comments from our audience. Clerk, have you received any written comments this evening?
I have not, and I've allowed the two people in attendees to unmute themselves and speak now if they would like.
Well, thank you. So we've opened it up to members of the audience. The clerk has admitted you to this evening's meeting. Please unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, you can state your name, your home address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Not seeing anyone unmute. Looks like we have Gerald has unmuted. Do you wish to speak, sir?
Oh, good evening. I'd just like to say that I'm here on behalf of the Duval Chamber of Commerce and pleased to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to scheduled items. Councilmember McHenry, you had requested to speak. You have the floor.
Thanks. I just wanted to give a super quick recap. We had, oh, I can't remember what day it was now. But we had a council chat, our first in a while. It was virtual, and I just want to thank Councilmember Schaefer for attending, and also Mayor Okerlander came. We had one person attend, and they were talking about something that they would like to present to council at some point, so I know that they might follow up about that with the mayor and staff, but just exciting to start it again, and it was very short notice. So I was just thrilled to have one person, but I've gone ahead and I've picked out two dates for the next two months, and the plan for those would be to also do virtual. I think that's just honestly with graduation and end of school and everything else going on, I think that would be the easiest for people, not to mention not really sure what's going on with phasing in the near future. So I'm gonna hold out hope that by July, maybe we could do an outdoor in-person. So I was in the middle of a draft in between meetings, but I didn't quite make it. I will email everyone out with those dates, including staff, so that they can get posted as well. And if you're interested in attending one to the council members, then just go ahead and reply only to me on that email, and let me know so I can make sure we don't have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, moving on to our council committee reports, the first one is the Finance Administration Committee by Chair Remington. That's myself. Briefly, we did meet with Councilmember Napland and Councilmember Lengel last Thursday evening for three hours. We worked on the authority approval levels. We took a look at the recommendations by staff, and we'll be meeting again this Thursday evening to be able to advance that further. We do have the procurement policy scheduled for our next meeting on the 18th. And so we're hoping in our next two or three meetings to get that ready to go forward to you. So moving on to Land Use Committee, Chair Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So today we had a Land Use Committee meeting, and I thought it was amazing. I really appreciate all that our Director Thomas has put into her reports that she's working on. So she reported on the King County Planning Policy, Public Review, and also the King County Urban Growth Capacity Report. And so Director Thomas has put together these summaries that are really great, that are kind of internal working documents that she hasn't done before. And so they will be going to the Planning Commission and to the City Council, but there is kind of like a matrix that shows comments that are gonna stay in internal or will be for us, and it kind of memorializes what we were thinking during this process. And then also it will have a column for separate notes that are gonna be going to King County. So I just think that she's done an amazing job on it, and I know that she's had help from Sela Chavez with this as well, but so it just really helped me personally simplify this very complex document. And she's gone through each page by page that Duval is mentioned. It's just, I think it'll help all of us, so thank you. And it'll help us into the future as well, so that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Chair Brudnicki.
So we did meet on April 27th, and we're gonna cover the IFit KC Community Representative Update. So the Police Department has received six applications for community representative positions. All interviews of candidates will take place on April 20, 2021. The interview panel will consist of the mayor, Okerlander, Councilmember Schaefer, Josh Lowell, Duval Chamber, Acting Chief DeBock, and Lieutenant Saber. The Police Department is looking to select at least two representatives and not more than six. And then we talked about the police recruitment hiring, so Officer Pa has started with our agency, and his FTO process is underway, and then Recruit Dunkley will be starting with our agency on May 16th. His academy training will begin in June and will be completed in October. And we are currently recruiting for a lateral police officer. We have one applicant, and we'll be scheduling a virtual oral board soon. Councilmember Schaefer expressed interest in sitting on the oral board panel, and we had a discussion regarding the recent changes in law enforcement and candidate backgrounds, and that makes it very challenging for hiring police officers right now. Acting Chief DeBock shared how other agencies are having similar challenges with hiring. So if you have any questions, you can certainly ask Acting Chief DeBock about that in more detail. Propertyroom.com discussion, we discussed about how the propertyroom.com is a cost-free service, and the Police Department could utilize to assist with evidence disposal and destruction. I believe that's on our agenda tonight. So that definitely was supported as a recommendation by all three members of the committee. And then there was a water safety update, and if you have further questions regarding that, Lieutenant Saber provided the update from the WCI on recommendations regarding the no-wake zone signage and shared life jacket program. So if you need to know more about that, I would just contact him directly to ask about that. And that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee Chair McHenry.
Thank you. So we just had a meeting last week, and it was because the president of the Snoqualmie Valley North Little League was able to come and talk to us a bit with some history. They have a 501(c)(3) organization that they've gotten a grant for and talking about the Big Rock Park and potential uses for that. And so it was just the beginning of this conversation, and I brought this up at the COW earlier, so you guys got a little bit more. But I think it's just overall, I would say some of the highlights would be, you know, council want, definitely wants community involvement in the planning of and use of that space, and that even though sports is a big part, you know, it's important to really incorporate everyone from the community. And then we had an update on the Government Facilities, RFP, which we also got into in the COW. So just to kind of, I guess, summarize from the committee, the committee in general was comfortable with the original scope with minor modifications as needed, and that's all I have for our committee meeting.
Thank you. We also have ad hoc committees. There's the Council Procedures Update, Code of Conduct from Chair Hoag. Is there anything to share this evening?
Nothing new. Our next meeting is Tuesday at 1 o'clock.
Thank you. We also have Human Services Grant Policy, Chair McHenry.
Yes, thank you again, and thank you to Sherri James for sending us an update on this. We have not meted as a committee, but the update would be that emails have been sent to previous applicants, and the announcement was posted on the website and Facebook on April 13th. There's to date been one application received for this grant process, and a reminder email will be sent by the end of this week to everyone, and the deadline for applications is May 15th.
Thank you. I will move on to our administrative update from Director Thomas. We have two items on there, a community development and current development update, and then council approved moving the sign code update to the City Council Meeting, and Director Thomas will cover that as well. So Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members of our community. We'll go ahead and start with the sign code update. In your COW packet, we provided a memo on temporary signage, and as we update the sign code, we are going to be looking at a content neutral approach, and I have asked our city attorney, Daniel, to come and give us a little history on why we're going towards content neutrality for our temporary signage. And so, Daniel, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay? Perfect. All right. Well, good to see you all. So I won't overly extend this. This is a topic that I've worked with a number of clients on, and it all stems from the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court case. It's actually been a while now. It's kind of crazy how time flies, but that was back in 2015. I'm sure you've all heard about it, but essentially what that did is it created a new standard for review of regulations based on content of those regulations. So when dealing with sign codes, in the Reed case dealt with temporary signs and temporary non-commercial signs, and the essential rule was that if you had to read the content of the sign in order to determine which regulations apply, then you're dealing with a content-based regulation, and that elevated it to a, that regulation to the highest level of scrutiny if challenged in court. It's called strict scrutiny. We don't need to get into those details, but that's typically a fatal level of scrutiny because it's so hard to overcome. And so what cities all across the country had to deal with is looking at their sign codes to look at those temporary sign regulations that are non-commercial. And when we think about our sign code and other sign codes, the one section that always pops out is the political sign section. So that had a specific type of set of regulations for political signs that weren't the same as for a community event or any sort of just other non-commercial expression, ideological signs, religious signs, whatever those may be. And so what we're, you guys are dealing with and everybody else has had to deal with is to try to look at their sign code and find a way to revise that sign code to remove those content-based regulations so that it would withstand scrutiny, withstand a challenge if necessary. And so what that's generally going to mean is that a lot of those sections that you have in your code right now that deal with things like political signs or community event signs and whatnot, they're gonna look different. And so what the team is trying to do is to identify those areas and revise those areas, and then they'll come back to you for review. But the whole purpose in that is to make sure that the expression in that sign, the content of that sign, isn't dictating more or less restrictions depending on what's being said. And so when you think about it, from that temporary non-commercial standpoint, you shouldn't have it easier if you are having political speech as compared to an ideological statement. Because really, we as the government don't have a role in regulating that. There is a line in the Ninth Circuit, we're in the Ninth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals, that has said that commercial signs can be treated differently. There's a different standard. It's not personal First Amendment protected speech. It's commercial speech. It still has protections, and it still has to have reasons behind those regulations, but it is different. It's a lower standard. So we're kind of trying to parse out the code a little bit, and when we do that. And so does anybody have any questions? That's kind of the baseline. It's the quick version for the quick report. Anybody have any questions on kind of the why for this particular set of types of signs?
Any questions from council? Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, just a very general question, Daniel. The, when will we see something a little bit more concrete to help us, you know, help us understand the details of what, you know, what's potentially contentious and what's not, what's allowed, et cetera?
You want me to jump in really quick, Daniel?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so we are working on an internal matrix right now, and we're looking at what we call time, place, and manner, and that's really how you start to categorize them, because we're no longer gonna have political signs from residential signs. They're all gonna be in one group. There's gonna be commercial versus non-commercial. And so we're working on that internal draft right now. We're pretty close to having the matrix done, and we're gonna meet with our city attorney next week to go over it. There is a really nice memo in the packet that provides all the different types of temporary signage and what the requirements are now, and then also kind of gives you, I think, a flavor of how it is going, it is going to look different. We have done research on several cities, and so that'll be part of the inclusion into our next update is what we found out of other communities, and every community is treating it a little bit differently. And so what we're trying to do is kind of take and pull apart the best of all the different communities. So I would expect that in the next four weeks, we'll have our first general workshop on this item. One thing that's gonna be really important is that we communicate and allow the community to participate in this update. That's always really important when we do a sign code update. And it's not just about our community, but it's also about our business community, because they're gonna be the most likely impacted, and then also our nonprofits, because they do quite a bit of temporary signage as well.
Sure. That's very helpful, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mayor Pro Tem, aye?
Yes, Ryan Cotton or interim city administrator.
Laura, when you're done, I have a couple of add-ons.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now, and then I'll pull up the presentation for current development while you're going next.
Sounds like teamwork.
Thank you.
I just wanted to brief the council and Mayor Pro Tem on two items that I'm working on. Doing a lot of human resources work. The HR committee will be meeting for, I think, maybe the first time next week, and we have quite a laundry list of items that you get to for updates and improvement. Secondly, I wanted you to know that Mayor Okerlander has asked me to speak, to work on the financial planning. There was a presentation last meeting, and to do an RFQ and work with various powers to be in the council to make sure that we accomplish the goals and to bring something forward related to that in the near term. That's it, Laura.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? Okay, I'm going to pull up my presentation, so give me just a minute. Hopefully, everybody can see it. Let me, oh, there we go.
We can see it, Laura.
Okay, you can see it. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Steve. He is the partner in this, and his team actually really did the lion's share of the work. They provided the presentation. So we'll pretty much tag-team. I'll go ahead and start, and then we can answer questions. As you know, it's been a very busy year within the development community, and so we're definitely starting to see still a continued uptick both in applications and construction and all the things that go along with that. So this is an updated community development map that we update about every three months. We last updated the map, I believe it was right around January. So again, this shows our, let me put this over here, sorry, you guys, shows all the projects that we have that are somewhere in the pipeline. All we do know that some of them are inactive, but the majority of them are active. They are color-coded by what's in clear and gray, so that means active construction in the field versus engineering, which means right after your entitlement or your preliminary plat, and then you start that engineering review, and then that legal lot, that green, that means that there's permits that are being pulled for those projects or have been pulled. And then you also have some pink areas, which are preliminary subdivisions, and then blue are site plan reviews. This, oh, sorry, I should have put this in slide mode, but because it's up at the stop share, I can't get it in that right now, so I apologize. So current development, we are showing in this slide essentially an update of, again, what it is, the status, the zoning, the application, or the vesting date, when it was approved, when it expires, the size, and the total number of units. So we do continue to keep that updated, so you can see Meadowlark is a project that is new to this list. So that's one new plat that we have in, and we are expecting a couple of other projects to come in, at least one or two more residential projects and potentially two, what I would call mixed-use projects. This is just a legal lot of record, so this just shows, again, how many units have we pulled, because you've seen that on the map. So we have Big Rock Phase 1 and 2, so you can see that they're clicking along. They still have some units, some permits to pick up, so we're still seeing that. Duval Village obviously picked up all of their permits last year, and if you haven't driven by, they are definitely under vertical construction and are making really good progress. The weather's been pretty good, so I think that has helped out a lot. Site plan reviews, those are essentially not subdivisions, but they're site plan reviews. So Willow Ridge Lot 21 is going to Planning Commission here in the next couple of weeks, and then hearing right after that. And Rio Vista Park goes to design review at Planning Commission next week, and then to hearing in May. This is just kind of a detail of the projects that we have that are, this Sunset Court is on 143rd. It's 11 townhomes. They had their design review expire, and so they actually have to come back in and go through the Planning Commission and hearing process, but they are ready for clearing grade, and we expect them to begin construction this month. This is the Thayer project. It is 16 single-family units. They have completed their tree felling, and their clearing grade is now actively in process. The next project we have is Rio Vista. This is an aerial when this project pretty much was starting construction. So this, we'll start to see the park start construction after it's approved. If you haven't driven by, it's getting, it's progressing along pretty well as well. I don't have really technically an estimate of when it'll go to final plat, and Steve might be able to to answer, to answer that better on when projects are gonna likely hit final plat. We also have 65 degrees. This is a 67-unit project. There are 55 single-family residences. They are attached, and then 12 condo units. They have started demo entry removal as well, and they are now actively in clear and grayed process. We also have the ridge at Big Rock Phase 1 and 2, so you can see, you know, they're continuing to move forward. They're starting to seek occupancies almost on a weekly basis, you know, between 6 and maybe 10 a month is their goal between now and the end of September, when they think they should be closer to being out of there, and then moving on into Phase 3 and 4, which is the next slide. That's actively under construction. It has been for well over a year. It's one of our largest projects that we've seen in quite a while. There's 206 units. And so their first storm vault is complete. Their second is in progress. They have submitted their Phase 3 final plat. They will find a plat in two phases, so Phase 3 and 4. And obviously, Phase 3, which is the first phase of the final plat for this project, will include the park area and the city parcel, so the area down off of Road D. And it will also include the park to the north, so that was something that was really important to the council and the community. So that is the first phase that we'll see. They have submitted their first final plat set for us to look at. It's a pretty complex project, so we were glad that they brought it in early because it'll take us a while to get through all of that. Darcy's Dinky Donuts. We're really excited. It is finally a real thing. We've had a pre-construction meeting, and I heard today that they have been out surveying, and I did get a phone call from the owner applicant, and they will be actively under construction here probably mid-May. And so that's next to Redemption Church, so stay tuned. The community, I've seen it in social media, they seem to be really excited to see this come to town. Steve, did you wanna, did you want to add anything?
Good evening, council. Steve Lenishewski, mayor. Sorry, City Duval Pub Works. I'm not particularly, it's busy out there. You know, superintendent is out every day, weekends come and go, as well as, you know, Larissa. I think the thing to know is complication happens towards the end, so, you know, people have to do different things. We have a couple of projects that have improvements owed to the city. So the Rio Vista project, of course, has the park. Toll Brothers project, of course, has the parks. I'm working on other details with the applicants. Final plating is, you know, sounds easy, but it's very tedious, right? That's verifying everything is installed per plan, any conflicts resolved, any resolved conflicts changed, reflected in change drawings or as-built. Any conflicts resolved, any resolved conflicts changed reflected in change drawings or as built, as we call them. So then we have a confident and competent record of activity. But like, yeah, Laura and I were kind of commiserating on how how much is occurring in the field. We take calls. We try to improve all the time with communication to adjacent property owners. Not that there are requirements, but again, you know, once a bulldozer shows up, people get concerned. When, you know, the CIPA documents go out, I don't think anybody really understands what that means in the beginning of a phase of a project. While it's, while there's no bulldozers there, it means bulldozers are coming. So it's always hard to help them understand the the way the process works. So we take, you know, a fair bit of calls. The first day someone shows up and starts doing, you know, permitted work. So, you know, we do put up, I think this council is aware of, you know, project billboards. We have the development community post project billboards as well. Now, and we'll work on some kind of implied compliance with maybe notifying the neighbors. So that's something that they can expect. That it probably won't limit the calls we earn as a staff, but it will at least give them some information forthcoming. Yeah. Lots going on out there. And I think kind of, you know, duck on the water too, from those images. Yeah, it looks like there's a lot there, but there's still plenty more in the background, either in preliminary stages, going through preliminary application meetings with staff and then, you know, doing their their groundwork. So lots to do.
Does council have any questions?
Councilmember McHenry.
It's not a question. Just to thank you for putting these together. I always really enjoy them. I have my usual driving paths that I make. And so this reminds me to go check out some other areas and see how the progress is going. Thanks.
And then Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I'm just curious. It looks like we're almost through the units that have already received final plat. Do you think there will be a bit of a lull between those finishing up and, you know, maybe Rio Vista Phase Two or some of the other projects getting final plat and starting to go through those units?
That's a really great question. We still have almost a dozen units to issue out at Toll Brothers. But it is there. I think there might be a little bit potentially of a lag. It just depends on really how fast Rio Vista and Toll Brothers get towards final plat. I think we all sometimes underestimate, like Steve said, the amount of work it takes to get to final plat. But we also try to work with our development communities too, so that when they do final plat, they don't just come in and say to the the building department, here's 75 permits. So what we try to do is do an early review of maybe a couple here and there as we have capacity. So that it's not, it's not really super crazy when it final plats. Because it's crazy during final plat, but we don't want it to be crazy again on that other end. That was a really good question. We, we are seeing, you know, some infill development of projects as well. So it's, it's interesting, you know, we're, we're starting to issue like onesies and twosies in infill development. And we do have some other projects that are active, that are non-residential, that you'll see start to build, you know, that are either remodel or, for example, you know, a church that, you know, that will move forward. So we have quite, we have quite a bit. It's funny because, you know, we did the cutoff at the end of March and then we got some more projects. And so when you see the next update, you'll see it probably at least another handful of projects that are entering into the queue.
When are, when are you thinking that the Toll and Rio Vista are the final plat? Because those are, I think, the two next that would come, like even if you have a rough estimate.
I, you know what? I would rely on Steve to help on that because, you know, kind of what's going on in the field and how close they're getting to final plat, he has a definitely a much better idea on that. So Steve, do you have a rough guess?
Certainly, well, the one that's kind of super easy is the 11 Lot One on 143rd, the two, what is it, Sunset Court? So that's 11. I think Rio Vista certainly will be the, if the developer watches this, they'll like contest it. Certainly mid to late summer. I know they have improvements still to kind of confirm on the park. And they'd like to get going as soon as they can on everything. But again, it's, it takes time. It may seem miniscule, but, you know, repairing deficiencies, whether they're in the pipe network, which again, things happen where, you know, the curb guy drives a stake right through the storm pipe and that occurred this week. So I mean, there's things that our inspectors catch that, you know, the guy setting curbs has no idea it was below the ground. He's just driving a stake in the ground to set the form board up to them, you know, pour the curb again. So Rio, I think certainly Rio will be this summer. A couple of smaller plats with the weather we have, if weather holds and unfortunately, you know, the emergency preparedness part of what I've kind of been studying. It looks like, you know, maybe a drought summer is upon us. Those, you know, the projects will go fairly fast if they're dry. Thayer off of First Avenue, certainly the 16 units there. There's, there's quite a few more on 143rd that are really gonna fly fast. Once they do get going, they're, they're all kind of co-mingled together on four parcels adjacent and kind of like a domino effect. You know, when they start one, they'll finish four pretty quick. So I think that's roughly 60 out of two projects there that aren't approved yet. But I think again, once they are, it's fairly flat and fairly simple. I think Toll Brothers Phase Three, which will include the park, I know they are very hopeful to even pave that phase. And Phase Three, I don't know if Laura wants to throw the map back up, but Phase Three bisects the road that entered, that enters off of Big Rock in the middle of the plat, right? So the parks will be part of that and then everything to the west. And that'll be a significant amount of units. They want to pave that in, I think they said, the 18th or 19th. But again, you know, that's, they have, if they don't have targets, they don't hit them. So that's, that's their hope. But I mean, they're, they're moving, you know, surveying lot corners in. It's, it's a lot of work. They destroy a lot of things, you know, doing the next thing, whether it's a wall or whatnot. So, you know, this summer will certainly have a couple hundred more units hit the, hit the street. And I did, I do believe I had heard they are sold out in Phase One and Two of Toll Brothers on Big Rock and Third. There you go.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I wanted to welcome you to the meeting. We're just wrapping up our administrative update. We need to see if there's other questions from council. Council did approve moving the mayor update to when you arrived. So that's still on the schedule here. And then finally, we did not remove this facility item from the meeting. The council wanted to continue our discussion and it'll still be up to council whether someone wants to make a motion on that agenda bill. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem, for filling in. I think there's a lot of us on this call that know it's Little League season. And I had two on the same field tonight. So getting to see them play is really important to both of them. So thanks for your grace and space and in accommodating that commitment tonight. So I'm just gonna do a quick mayor's report. Normally I have a lot more to talk about and there is a lot going on. But I will reserve most of that for the next meeting, considering we do have a pretty heavy agenda with the presentation. First up, I just wanted to kind of, I sent out some emails today in in between meetings regarding what's going on with our phases in COVID. And and let me check real quick, Mayor Protem. Did anyone already discuss where we're at on this today? I don't want to duplicate an effort, but I want to share information.
I believe council did receive some updates on the governor's office. But I think it would be helpful for our citizens to to hear that from you, Mayor.
Perfect. I wasn't sure if it was brought up during Greta the Order during Cal or not. So first of all, I think we were all expecting to move back to Phase Two today based on King County's metrics. The governor has issued a pause on rollbacks. That was in due significant part to multiple factors, including the fact that while we are in a fourth phase of the wave, it appears in many areas of the state, including King County, that that's plateauing. We also are in a situation at the state where we have significant vaccine availability. In fact, over the weekend, multiple sites were at risk of the vaccine spoiling because they didn't have enough people coming in and make appointments. Our zip code of 98019 and 98014, so the Lower Snohomish Valley, we're at an overall eligible 16 and up vaccine rate of at least first dose at 73.8%, which means we're only second to Ashen Island. So our area is doing extremely well with following guidelines and getting those vaccinations so that we can return to normal. The message from both King County Public Health today and the Department of Health and the Governor's Office is that our only way out of this at this point is vaccination. We can't get to herd immunity unless people get vaccinated. This isn't like the flu. It's, it's very different. I've heard recently folks can continue to care, compare it to that. But it is really important that folks continue to like their eligibility. Additionally, today, the FDA, word came from the FDA that most likely by the end of the week, I believe, the Pfizer vaccine will be approved for ages 12 to 15, which will definitely hit a significant portion of our population. I think one of the challenges, just kind of looking at the data today, after our King County Health phone call and really our biggest, biggest surge in illnesses and hospitalizations are with people between the ages of 20 and 45. That hits a significant portion of our city's population as far as our demographics. Additionally, it's really interesting to note that in our area, while everyone continues to talk about the older folks getting that got the virus early and got super ill during the course of the entire pandemic, 76% of the confirmed cases of COVID in the city of Dewal were between the ages of zero and 50 years old, including 20 between the ages of zero. Our zero to 30 is only 41% and 50 and up is only 20%. And I use these numbers as a reminder to council and the community that this is not a virus that discriminates against age. Yes, this most significant were in older folks to begin with, but it is a serious issue that we're going to continue to contend with and until we get to full herd immunity, we're going to continue to have to deal with some restrictions. But, you know, at the end of the day, the news was good. It was very good. And so I'm definitely pleased and I think a lot of the mayors throughout King County are very relieved that we didn't roll back in the cycle. But we're hoping that we can stay here. They're going to reevaluate in a couple of weeks. And if the numbers keep trending the way they are, we should be able to stay and then eventually move forward. So that's great news, actually. Additionally, I sent an email to council, but for the public's sake, the legislative session did end a week ago. And we did get appropriated a line item in the state capital budget for helping to renovate our police department. So we're, we'll be receiving $100,000 for that. This morning, also legislative related during the Snohomish Valley Mayor's meeting, Senator Mullet and Representative Ramos discussed quite a bit about transportation. We all know that a new package did not get passed this year. That said, significant funding was allocated for big projects around us that do impact us here. And one of which, of course, we don't talk a lot about up north, but definitely is a huge impact in the Southern Valley is improvements to Highway 18. And we do know that a lot of folks go through our area to get to Highway 18. So that's a future concern. And then there were projects on 522 that we've been working with others to get funded for several years that are in, are in the budget as well. Relating to a new actual transportation budget package of funding, nobody, including the legislators, know what's going to happen. They are very hopeful that they can get a revenue package passed by the end of March. But the biggest issue is revenue sources and how much. And that's definitely a huge public perception and actual uphill battle for them. And I, and during that process, I reminded the folks that especially with the funding of 522 and Highway 18, that getting our Highway 203 funding quarter study funding in place takes on more importance because those changes will be impacting us. During that meeting, we also discussed as well the housing situation in King Pierce and Snohomish Counties. I sent an article out to council this morning that shows where people are moving. The most important thing to our area immediately is that our houses and Councilmember Hoag is well aware of this with her work. Our houses in the city of Dewal are staying on the market an average of six days and going for $200,000 to $300,000 over asking. The days of Dewal being the affordable place to live are gone. And in fact, they've been gone for a while. But what was very striking about this article is those that they interviewed are moving out to places like Dewal and Snohomish and more rural Pierce and Snohomish Counties, specifically because they feel like they're on vacation when they're not at work. So that's, in some ways, that's very good in showing that we've, over the years, we've developed a really good quality of life. We attract people that want to be engaged in the community. But with the numbers that are happening and specifically with housing needs in Snohomish County and the rapid growth, we're going to have a serious challenge, to say the least, moving forward as more people move out to the outskirts instead of the core areas. And another meeting we had today with Sound Cities, it was actually our events committee, but had some discussions of sound transit and what was going on with transit and housing in our area. And people are starting to listen a little bit more. These, these articles are waking people up. And so once we get past a few more key items, there'll be a big focus on that. And my little baseball player is saying hello.
The other team does.
Sorry about that, guys. He's excited. So I think, you know, there's a lot more discussions we had regarding housing in our area, affordable housing. There are multiple cities, not just us, that are looking at reducing our housing targets, but the need is only growing. So there's going to have to be a real silo breakdown of the discussion on how we make transportation and housing work in the region. And I think people are finally, the urgency is becoming more real as the shift goes from just affordable housing to how do we get people housed in general. So that's going to be, I think, one of the bigger issues during the interim to be working with our legislators on. Additionally, we heard from Senator Murray's office regarding, or I'm sorry, Senator Campbell's office today regarding the infrastructure package in Congress and as well as from our legislators. And we do expect if that passes a significant amount of funding to shift to the state for really necessary projects, water, sewer, transportation, et cetera, which will open the doors to ask for more local funding in theory if we have our decks in a row and start to move forward. So that's more than I expected, but it was a really big day and that's not everything. So happy to answer any questions and then we'll try and do a more deeper, a deeper dive at our next meeting. Okay, see none. One more small item. Apologies. It does look like I was appointed to the Small Cities Council for National League of Cities. So that group will meet, I believe we meet quarterly. And that's the group that addresses issues and discusses issues affecting us at the federal level in cities 50,000 and fewer. So again, now that we're members, look at those committees. If there's anything you're interested in serving on, volunteer. There are openings happen all the time, so it's not too difficult to get on something and serve. And for the time being, everything's virtual instead of having to fly across the country. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on and thank you for your patience to our presentation this evening from WAVE Broadband with Mr. Fred Lutz and Kevin Steeny.
You're trying to talk. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, sorry. So I'll try to rephrase that. Thank you very much for letting us have the opportunity. It was great to hear your report, Mayor, but also everything that we heard from the start of the meeting, frankly, especially as it relates to development opportunities and that you're, you're approving and all of the exciting things that we have our eye on as well. Because when we see homes and businesses being built and communities that we serve, that's a good thing. And so it was, it's really, really nice to be able to see and hear the progress that we're, we're making. I wanted to, and we two are happy about the COVID standstill, I guess, as opposed to rollback because that affects us like it does everyone. A couple of things that I wanted to do, last time we met or virtually, we talked about a few things and I just wanted to. And I just wanted to update, bring them up to to talk to them in terms of progress and see if anyone had any questions. One of them, probably most important on my list was the update to the power supply uh project that we have. So standby power supply we have on our network, so that everyone I'm confident is aware of. We talked about that at length. We were maybe fifty percent of the way through it um several months ago. That's been complete now. Uh it my feedback would be that that y- you are noticing that the constituency is noticing that it is complete. Um it because it made it's made a difference. We've had less calls, for instance, for for the network being out. So it is it is complete project, has its purposeful effect. Uh we will still continue to, as you may recall, that some of that was cleanup work from the past. Usually we do this as we build network, but. Uh there were some bits and pieces of our network from from past years that weren't uh outfitted with with power supply. As they should have been initially. So we, there was a little bit of that was cleanup. So going forward, obviously, that'll be uh as we build. Uh a new infrastructure, which we're we're doing a lot of. So anyway, I just wanted to update uh council on that. That has been complete. Not sure if you've heard, um I'm always welcome. Would love to hear if you have, good or bad. Um issues related to that, but just want to provide that update.
Yeah, the one thing I want to add to that as well is we are close to finishing up a project, which is status monitoring of those. So we'll get a re, it will let us know when there's an actual power failure out there. And instead of waiting for the power supply to go off and you call me, uh we will be notified that the power supply has gone into backup power supply. That we can send a technician out there and get generators on, or at least get eyes on it. Uh we've also worked with the power companies throughout uh. Well, the whole United States, but we've got a program now with it. We can see where they've got powered or power outages. It lets our knock know right away instead of having to go into their websites, find that. Their websites are now updating our knock. So we know that there's a power outage affecting downtown Duval or northern Snohomish County or Skagit, wherever it might be. In the United States now, we're getting notifications on those. So we can be a lot more proactive when there are major um storms coming through. Or someone cutting down a tree and knocking out our lines, so.
All our effort to tool ourselves and be more responsive to the customer experience, obviously, but. Good, yeah, in the old days, we'd have to wait till the red light flashed on the back on the side of our supply. Now we get information, you know, to a mobile device or to a knock or what have you. So any questions on any of that? All right, next up, the uh.
Let's, we've got a question from Councilmember Napland.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to share my appreciation. This was a a a big sticking point for me. Because we have a generator and the power would go out, we'd have no internet access. And you know, working from home and it was, it was difficult. So this is just really tremendous progress and I'm extremely thankful for your dedication to get to a hundred percent. Uh backup power. So that's really fantastic.
Thank you very much and appreciate the input, because I know you talked, you sent me a couple of emails after the last meeting, so I appreciate all that interaction. Um the next update is the EBBP and it uh which is is nomenclature for the. For the federal broadband program. That the that the that the government is is has created. Now, it is not, uh Mayor, I don't know if you've talked about it. At all yet to the constituency and there's not, it's not up and running yet. It's for the whole nation. It's part of Biden's. Program. Uh and and we, we wave and all, all service providers are feverishly working to get it up and running as soon as we can. At a very high level, what it does uh is it it has an amount of money and I can't remember off the top of my head. The amount of money, but it will, that pool money will be used to out, to enable. Uh folks that meet the criteria, homeowners that meet the criteria, to have funding for internet service. And some limited uh uh products to enable internet service. And and the way it's going to work is it's it's a pool of money and it will last as long as there is money in the pool. And it's hard for us to forecast, you know, how long that's going to be. But the net net is it's going to be very purposeful in helping people get access to broadband who don't have it now and and have a great need for it, obviously.
Like me to share the FCC page that outlines the program?
Was it?
Yes, uh would you like me to share the page?
Oh gee, if you've got it handy, yeah, I've got it. It'd be off, it'd be great. There's a lot more detail in it.
Um so this, this is the the public page. Um and in general, so Fred, to your, answer your question, I have been. As soon as we get new information, we're pushing it out to the community so they can be prepared. Uh but in general, if you take a look here, um one of the keys is that. I know this is an impact to people in our community is that um it is people that already exceed, receive service. That would now be eligible for the discount are eligible for this program. Um so that's going to help some of the people in our community that have been stuck between a rock and a hard place. Um and I'll just um. For the public that want to take a look, if you just go to scc.gov forward slash broadband benefit, you can get more details. And all of them.
Yeah, and there's going to be, there's going to be a lot more information that the the government will put out. Uh and we're going to all help, everybody's helping together to get exposure to the program and how what we, what uh people need to do and all of that. So we're we're feverishly working to get that going. Um it's it's uh they've made it really administratively light for us. Which is good for consistency. So there's a, you know, a portal, if you will, that folks will go to and it will be a clearinghouse for the qualification. And then work with our billing system and ensure that, you know, we get paid back and everything's accounted for. And so it's, I think, you know, it's a big. Given this national program is a big hairy project, but it is, it is being done about as well as something this big could be done, I think. So we will uh continue to keep you updated on that and I would ask you to, anytime you've got questions or hear from constituency about it. Uh don't hesitate to to let us know. Um and then the last thing, uh somewhat similar but not EBBP related uh is uh Russ Elliott. Who you may know leads the broadbands, the broadband office for Governor Inslee. And more working with he and his team uh around the state to ensure that we're at the ready. When he gets the funding uh from the state, which will be for uh increasing our network. Or or access to broadband in areas that formerly would not have been built. So there's another pool of money that the government is, state and federal funding. I think it's ten billion for the state and ten billion. Uh federally, if I'm thinking about it right, but I've seen a lot of this, so don't don't blame me on that. Nonetheless, it's going to go, the purpose for this of this money. Is to help service providers like us. Build out our networks areas that we couldn't before. And you know, everybody knows we have investors and we're out of the capital too to get any return. And so if some, there's a lot of the area, there's a lot of areas in this state and everywhere, frankly, where we really would like to build, but the cost economics are just. They don't make sense because it's too, it's too uh sparsely populated. So uh we've got a great working relationship with Russ Elliott and his team at the state uh to help us. And he's basically, you know, the arbiter of doling out this money to ensure that it's spent wisely. And so, you know, he's looking at the right way. Good news is for us, he's come, he comes from our side of the business and understands the 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 building requirements. He's he's run networks before, understands what it costs. And he's also looking at the right way from my perspective, because he's earmarking per service providers first. So he came in literally in here and we looked at a map and he said, okay, these are communities that that I think, based on where you currently are. Where you ought to be focused in building your network, because it's going to be cheaper for you than Comcast, for instance. Because we may in a specific area have more network. And so they're, he's looking at the right way to make sure that the spend is efficient. And it's effective and purposeful for for increasing access for broadband. Um so that's uh, that's going really well. Uh again, he doesn't have the money yet, but he's expecting to get three or four hundred million dollars in 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 his account. Uh over the course of the next couple of months and then we're we're obviously ready, good timing from a seasonal perspective, but we're ready to put it to work in terms of building. Infrastructure and getting getting more people connected. Um so that's, that's uh our update. I wanted to be judicious with your time, knowing you have a lot going on. More than welcome to talk about those things or anything else. Uh but we just appreciate, you know, at the end of the day, getting the opportunity to. To uh interface with you and and um hear what's going on and because it's an important growing part of the of our of our service area. Uh as you mentioned, and and we uh we we want to continue to be a meaningful provider in the area.
I'll go ahead and kick it off and this is another thank you and it would be, I would love to hear um a short explanation from Kevin for kind of the community. Um my neighbor had had a very strange outage a couple of weeks ago. Um I think our house may have been grand zero. And and to be honest, our wave hasn't gone out in, I I think, at least five years. Um and we haven't had issues since we installed a mesh system. Uh and had some of the problems in our house fixed. Uh but our internet went out on a Saturday night on a weekend. Um it was very bizarre. The TV and the Xbox downstairs started working, nothing, everything else was fine. We called Wave. Um Wave wasn't showing any outage on their end. Um and none of our neighbors or direct neighbors were having issues, but neighbors down the street a half mile away were. Um by Monday, I think it was, there was a ca, what Kevin called a cascading outage. Um and we we, and mind you, we worked directly through customer service. Um just reach out to Kevin if we needed uh, you know, some um public outreach on it. And it turned out, it ended up knocking out over time ninety-four homes. Um and uh it was apparently a problem that's only happened a few times over the last twenty-five years, so it was very unusual. But what I do have to say is that um while on the customer service end, they couldn't see what was going on. Uh when my husband or um or anyone did call um in that situation, um Wave was very responsive. Um and did what they could to escalate the issue and uh figure out what was going on. And I see that as a change from uh the company from years past. Um and it's much appreciated, but it was a very odd issue. So I would love to hear a little bit more about it, um because that was one of those issues where their system couldn't see that we had an outage until it was a much larger outage.
Yeah, so so the outage is where that particular area of homes actually plugs into at the head end level. Or the CMTS, which is the Cable Termination System. Um the actual port on the CMTS that was feeding those homes. Was intermittently going bad. Um and that is the, that's the one point where you can't see or or notice anything going off. Or off on there. Um since there wasn't a mass amount of customers going in on and off, it wasn't trading, triggering any alarms. Typically, if we see three boats drop off in a particular port, we know outage, let's go check, check it out. Since it was just dropping off randomly, it was never queuing a, an outage for us to look at. Uh so we had to emergency get into the head end and just unconnect that port, move it to a new port, uh to get shit back up and running there. Later, I think next week we'll be actually removing that card, putting a new card in. Can't have that uh in there, so. It's only, I've only seen that happen about four times in my thirty-some years in cable TV. Um it's, you know, it's a million dollar machine. Uh they don't typically go bad, but they are electronics and. Every electronic will go bad at some point, I can guarantee you that. So um sorry about that, but your communication to me. Uh helped me figure that out very quickly and get the right people moving. So um I do appreciate, you know, even even if if you. Even if everything's working properly, that extra, excellent escalation really helps me out. So. Um if you notice something, don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. I'm very happy to hear anything that's going on, so.
I I should also mention real quickly, the tech that came out to our house uh was down at a friend's house down the street right before um they came up to ours. And he was um fantastic and turns out he's a local Duvalite. Um so be nice to your local Duval Wave employees. He he did a great job and he, you know, was very informative to us. So um you're you're doing a good job with your customer service staff.
Awesome. That's wonderful here. That's uh, it's actually my number one team now is my Echo Lake Duval team. They went from the most underperforming team to my number one performing team as far as customer service. Um system reliability and and service reduction. So in your area, over the last quarter. We've reduced our service calls by forty percent um by the maintenance that our maintenance techs are doing. Um hopefully, you're not noticing that maintenance. So we're doing enough hours, of course, but the things that we're doing are, you know, making making sure that you guys are up and working during school and work hours. We try to do everything uh ghost, you shouldn't see us um doing much anything out there uh to do it late at night. So hopefully, that's all uh working well for you guys, so.
Thank you. And does council have any more questions or feedback for folks? Well, I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much, um Kevin and Fred, for your time this evening. And we'll keep our eye out for um any new information as we, you guys get your part of the broadband program rolling and do what we can to help share that message with the community.
Excellent. Uh we'll be there on the grand opening of the Donut Shop. Definitely be there and make sure.
I know, I sent a text during the meeting.
Supporting your your new business.
Sounds great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh so moving on, we do have one public hearing this evening. Uh Resolution twenty twenty-two, or I'm sorry. Resolution for the twenty twenty-two, twenty to twenty-seven Transportation Improvement Program. And with that, I will open the public hearing and hand it over to Mr. Lenishewski.
Uh good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens and staff. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So we are providing for the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, also known as the TIP, for public comment. I do not believe we've received any in writing through the clerk's office to date. Um but with that said, we talked about it at the last meeting. Uh the packet was prepared and as such has been presented and posted. Uh this is in conjunction with our comprehensive plan document that is current, as well as a two thousand seventeen update that the city worked on prior to my return. Uh this just guides the city in its transportation needs and estimates our programming required and total obligation for our roadway network. Related to transportation. I think, Mayor, with that said, we will open the hearing and see what happens. You're on mute.
Did you have a slide to put up, Steve, or just?
Uh I I sure can. Sorry, I did have a prep and I didn't share.
All right, well, we do only have two attendees. Um and let's see, okay, um. You're sharing it, I can't see it, but that's okay, because I've got a full screen here. Um we do have two attendees this evening. Um so. Uh Clerk, if you would please uh allow them to join and if either of you would like to provide public comment, um you may do so. Um alternatively, uh just double checking with the clerk to see if we've received any written public comment.
They've written comment. I did allow both attendees to uh speak and it does look like. Uh we have an Elaine Sawyer who has unmuted. Um so they may want to speak.
Ms Soder, would you like to speak? If you are speaking, we can't hear you. So I will take that as um she does not want to provide public comment and there's one other who's still on mute. Um if there is more public comment to be submitted and there are technical problems, I think we could make an exception to receive it by email. Um so with that, uh we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And uh we will move on to our next agenda item. Our next agenda item is uh new business, Agenda Bill twenty, Agenda Bill twenty-one dash forty-three A. Confirm Mayor Okerlander's appointment of Whitley Witt Kemble Williams to the Duval Cultural Commission, position three. A vacant three-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Would someone like to make a motion?
Red Nikki.
Do we have a second? All right, uh so we have a motion by Councilmember Red Nikki, um a second by a hair from Councilmember Hoag. Um to approve the appointment of Whit Kemble Williams to the Duval Cultural Commission. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh next agenda item, and this is a first touch, uh but there is no financial, direct financial impact. So if council would like to approve this evening, you may suspend your rolls and do so. Agenda Bill twenty-one dash forty-four A. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Duval and propertyroom.com for property auctioning and disposal services. Um Acting Chief DeBach?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, City Council staff and citizens. The police department's been looking for options to streamline our property room, and we're trying to find a way to speed up this and simplify the process of getting rid of evidence. We're making sure we're still being prudent as possible with the items of value. Currently, when an officer takes in found property or items related to crime, we normally have the property owner identified. When the case is closed, a notice of destruction is sent to the owner, and they have thirty days from receiving the letter to call us and make an appointment to retrieve their property. Under the current evidence destruction process, if they don't respond, then the item was, will be destroyed. When we have an, when we have evidence and the owner is now deceased, we still attempt the notice letter, but often it is returned as undeliverable. In these cases, the items will get destroyed if there's no value, or put up for auction if there's some value. The process of getting the current value of the unclaimed items has led to a loss of man-hours and extended the time needed to hold these items in our vault. Our evidence vault has limited space, and we are nearing our capacity. Our evidence custodian has contacted other agencies in the surrounding jurisdictions regarding their process and discovered a viable option for these types of situations. Snoqualmie, Issaquah, Monroe, Redmond, Curran, Seattle, Attleground, and the Washington State Patrol all use a service called propertyroom.com. This service does not cost the City of Duval anything to join, and appears to be a win-win option for what we're hoping to accomplish. Whenever an item of value cannot be returned to the owner or the person who found it, propertyroom.com will auction it off for us, and the City of Duval will get a portion of the proceeds. Propertyroom.com will do everything from the moment the item leaves our evidence room. They offer full transparent audible chain of custody tracking, and their information is available forever. They will schedule the pickup of the items from our agency, and they will create a detailed image and descriptions of the items to maximize the proceeds. They research, identify, and authenticate high-value items prior to the auction, and field questions from bidders during the auction period. They have an online reporting tool and handle the entire auction process from start to finish. To close the transaction, they will mail checks back to our department to complete the audit history. Our proceeds will be fifty percent for up to fifteen hundred dollars and then seventy-five percent after that, and these proceeds will be put back into the city's general fund. Propertyroom.com will maintain um the other portion of these uh funds for their uh cost of their expenses. Our city attorney has reviewed the contract in added language to match the WCI insurance and indemnity requirements for service contracts. Propertyroom.com has agreed to the changes and provided us with an updated contract for review. The new contract was reviewed by the attorneys on April first and has met their recommendations. Our finance department requested additional changes regarding when the proceeds will be received by the City of Duval. Propertyroom.com agreed to these changes as well, and then sent a final contract into, including the recommended changes for signatures, which is included in this packet. Uh, Duval Minister Code three-point-twelve addresses purchasing policies but is silent on zero-cost contracts. Since this is a contract, all contract authorities lies with council unless it's delegated. Uh, what we're recommending tonight is that City Council approve and be to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Duval and propertyroom.com for property auction and disposal services. We are requesting a decision at this meeting and request council to suspend council procedures in section five-point-six, requiring additional review and finalize this item at this meeting. Thank you.
Excellent staff report. Have any questions for Acting Chief DeBach? Councilmember Hoag?
You, so um I did spend some time on their website, it was kind of interesting, I I had not heard of them before. And it seems like some of the items, I mean, they'll list it and they don't put a reserve, so they'll list it for a dollar and they don't put a reserve, so there might be things that sell for practically nothing, but I mean, it seems like there are things that have a value that are selling for quite good, you know, good prices. Um, you're not planning on doing like automobiles, like police automobiles or anything like that out of this type of a auction?
It would just be the items that we take into our evidence vault that the owners don't claim.
Okay, because on their website, they did have police vehicles, and it seemed like they're uh for vehicles, it seemed like their costs are a lot higher, they charge a percentage, and then they charge relist fees. So there could be additional costs if you had to do a vehicle, I think, when I was looking at the contract, but um yeah, so that was my only, my only question, I wanted to make sure you're not going to be.
No, that that wasn't our intention, we're trying to basically get space in our property room, it's a, it's a very small office, so, and it's, it is nearing capacity.
Does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Red Nikki?
Um, over the years, you you remember, they always have had issues with the space in their room, and so this was such a brilliant solution, I was really happy to see it, and uh so thank you for the research on that.
Thank you, and it was our clerk, she did a lot of the research on this, I have to put that out to her.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, so um at this point, would council like to suspend their rules and approve this this evening? Um, Councilmember Lengel and then Remington?
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lengel, a second by Mayor Portem Remington to suspend the rules uh in order to approve the ordinance before us, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, would someone like to make a motion on the underlying bill?
I move we uh approve um AB twenty-one dash forty-four A and uh authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Duval and propertyroom.com for property auctioning and disposal services.
And.
Second.
So we had a female voice before Councilmember Schaefer, was that Councilmember Lengel?
It was me.
Uh, no, that was Schaefer. But I apologize, I was looking down at the agenda as I've, as I heard that, so we have a motion by Councilmember McHenry, a second by Councilmember Napland to approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash um forty-four A, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, um and with, we will go ahead and move on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash forty-five A, short-term extension of on-call contracts for discussion, Mr. Lenishewski and Ms. Thomas.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, and the two remaining audience, audience clientele. So uh all in all, this is here unfortunately to try to satisfy the three-touch rule. We expected this to be completed, but without overtime, uh staff assigned to this was not able to get to this project for the packet, but we did provide it in there just for review of what will come forward. Uh, what we are finding though through the preliminary review is most of the finance amounts of the dollar amounts are are going to be comfortable, we may only need to extend the bulk of them in their date, uh as they have a contract term. With that said, we're just extending these games since the policy isn't fully, you know, completed and enacted yet for procurement. That is it, this is just what it will take to do, you know, the normal business of the city, so, uh Laura would like to add anything? I'll see where she is.
Thank you, Laura Thomas, for the record, community development, I did want to add one item. Uh, Jody will also be bringing forward a separate ordinance to do some service contracts that are expiring uh mid-year, so that will come to you at your next council meeting as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor, uh the Finance Administration uh Committee has been looking at this quite closely and uh providing uh some recommendations to staff, uh there are several options for council to look at, and we'll be bringing those forward um in the near future, uh we'll send out some uh written material as well. I think we've extended contracts uh twice already for about six months, uh and we are hoping, as I mentioned earlier, at the COW, bring forward the procurement policy uh on the eighteenth for your review. But we we recognize that we can't just have these contracts go away, so uh you can expect to see a uh a recommendation uh with some options uh for council's review uh for being able to uh to discuss and vote on uh later, probably uh e- either uh late May or early in June, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider this our first touch and move forward to our next agenda item. Agenda Bill twenty-one dash forty-six A, Ordinance for Cost of Living Adjustment for Non-Representative Employees. Um, this is a first touch, but council does have the option to approve this evening uh with rule suspension if you so choose. And with that, I will pass it over to our inner interim city administrator, Mr. Ryan Cotton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to introduce this measure to you. This is um, I think about the thirtieth time that I've had this conversation with councils over the course of my career, so it's um pretty um, I feel like it's it's pretty common in terms of how I explain it. Um, it it's basically uh looking at internal and external uh equity as to what an annual cost of living increase should be, so let me, let me just um take you back to December, had the Teamsters contract been settled by them, uh then this item would have been on a December agenda, and it would have been a lot easier to explain, frankly, and I want to thank uh Councilmember Hoag for calling me today, so I can help um e- explain why it's before you today. Uh, the contract was not settled, so it wasn't settled till the last council meeting, uh when you adopted it. The amount uh the Teamsters received for the year that we're in, fiscal year twenty-one, was two-point-five percent. So the intent of this agenda item that uh is motivated bringing it forward to you is to uh find a way to uh uh understand that the unrepresented employees, the non-represented employees uh would normally have gotten an increase in December, but that was held off pending uh conclusion of those contract discussions. So what you have before you in an ordinance form is the uh the opportunity to remedy that by uh determining a percentage amount tonight, or sometime before June first, because the ordinance is stated to take effect June first for the purpose of of making sure that there is uh basically an equal amount uh in terms of an annual cost of living increase for the unrepresented employees. So um in order to get to um that conclusion, one, the thing we looked at most was internal equity. Uh, it just uh is one of those things that communities usually like to do is to understand that uh the unrepresented employees are looking to the elected officials to basically uh hold them um in a certain um uh not hold them harmless, but retain them. Because ultimately, why do you, why do you want to have any increase? Well, it's because uh Duval is in competition with other employers, and um they need, there's a need to hold people's compensation at least uh comparable to um what is happening in inflationary ways, as well as uh those who would seek to poach our employees, and that frankly happens uh all too often uh in many other places. So from an internal equity standpoint, as far as, and as well as a retention standpoint, a four-point-two-nine percent increase effective June one uh would would address the uh those problems. Um, you might ask, why can't we just make the pay retroactive? That's exactly what we would like to do. Um, but Washington law has stipulated that for unrepresented employees, that's not possible. Uh, the only way to accomplish this goal is to have an increase that is um something and uh greater, because five months have already passed. Um, and that's the, that that calculation, thanks to uh our finance director, is four-point-two-nine percent. I looked at external equity as well, you know, what is taking place elsewhere, and I contacted eleven uh different sources, many of them uh communities near Duval, and the amount of pay increase has ranged uh from zero percent to two-point-three-eight percent, and for represented employees, up to three-point-five percent for the fiscal year. That that's the number that it would have been headed and implemented January one. Uh, the average for inflation over the last year, according to the CPI, um urban is one-point-seven percent, so that gives you some comparables that the two-point-five percent, which you're trying to emulate, is is not out of line. Um, so the last thing I'll say is uh if the four-point-nine percent, excuse me, four-point-two-nine percent is not desired, there is another option to do a smaller increase um uh June one, and then another one uh before the end of the year. Um, however, that as uh Finance Director Mason has pointed out, would have a compounding effect. Um, and so we'd actually, as a community, end up paying a little bit more than is necessary to accomplish the goal, which is basically uh equal of what the you, the uh Teamsters Union received. Uh, I'm going to um say one more point, uh and it's not for action right away, but uh if we're looking at the Teamsters contract and trying to understand what the unrepresented um what's what's positive for the Embrist presented, it would be to also recognize that there were some health insurance changes, uh a vacation schedule change and an opt-out um health insurance change that was in that contract. To address that would take a change of the code of ordinances, and that will, would, that ordinance has not been created, and it could happen at any time uh during this fiscal year, so uh we will be working on that and probably bring that to you uh sometime early summer. Uh, so in um conclusion, looking at my notes, I haven't forgotten anything, inclusion, in conclusion, at some point before June one, it's recommended that City Council take action on an ordinance uh representing um for uh the two twenty-twenty-one pay scale for non-represented regular and hour employees provided for several billion, establishing an effective date of June one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton, um does anyone have any questions for uh Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I have concerns with how um this is structured, because giving a a substantial increase to try to do this catch-up only creates equality for two thousand twenty-one. For two thousand twenty-two and beyond into the future forever, there will be an additional two percent that will compound again and again, and I see the mayor shaking her head, um so unless there's a pay reduction at the end of the year, or that extra amount of increase, almost two percent, is debited from any future colas, it it does not, it would not be equal, that would mean non-represented would have substantially higher pay going into the future, um that's just how it works mathematically.
And.
It's, it creates an inequality, and it, I I just, I'm kind of confused, it seems like a really strange approach, I'm curious how other cities would handle this, because it it definitely creates an equality really forever.
Uh, well, I see your point, and your point is is valid, if it wasn't addressed in December for two thousand twenty-two in some fashion, that you used the word debit, I'm not sure, I would, I would say that, I would say a true-up. Um, then it would create that inequality, that's not the intent, so in December, uh when when we understand what inflation was for two thousand twenty-one, and we're looking forward to two thousand twenty-two, and we're taking into account the the possibility of that um windfall that you mentioned, uh that's, that's when a new percentage would be brought to you, that would, would true up everything for going forward.
So, so in a sense, just to kind of clarify a little bit, um what happens there is that um that that next uh cost of living increase, if done in December, uh will likely not be at parity with what the Teamsters get, because we have to keep that equity and that parity. Um, so the other thing to remember as well, um is that in addition to the other code changes we need to make, is um there is the intent to come forth in the future with an adjustment to our code to ensure uh that non-represented rented employees get the same cost of living in the same fashion as uh the representative employees, and that, the purpose of that is to make sure that we're not constantly dealing with compression issues with salaries um amongst represented and non-represented staff. Um, and that's been a long-term issue, and trying to find a long-term way to solve it, uh which will be part of discussions down the road. The goal um long-term is to not have to come to council with these decisions, um and that they be part of our normal process, that if a cola's given, everybody receives a cola. If a cola's not getting given, nobody receives a cola, and make sure that that's part of our um policies and procedures over the long run. Councilmember Nat, well, first off, we haven't heard from the others yet, so Councilmember Napland, we're trying to, well, we we can, we'll get back to you, um so anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Red Nikki?
So I'm going to try to reach back into my memory before we had a shift. into people going with the Teamsters and stuff way, way back. And I do recall that, at the time, the police chief mentioned the fact that whenever there were increases on one side, he would balance it out with those who are not members to, to sort of create that equity. And so that's what I recall, that when, you know, if you were in union, you got, and you got this, that those who are not members also. We did what we had to do to make it all equal. And so that's what I recall in the past, way back when.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, so my, my understanding is, to address Councilmember Napoli's concern, is that at the end of this year, we will more than likely not give an additional, whatever cost, you know, cost of living rate raise on top of the 4.29%. Instead, we'll look back and give, you know, give that based on some other number that would make it equitable, as if it hap, as if we gave a raise at the beginning of this year. Right, so I, I, yeah, because I had the exact same, exact same question. So I think that, that helped to, to answer that as, as well. Councilmember Napoli, are you?
Councilmember Schaefer, I'd like to make sure we get to everybody first.
Okay, okay, sure.
Haven't been so, I haven't been so good about following the round robin, and I'm trying to do better at that. So once we, everyone has a turn to speak, we'll go back around. Mayor Portem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Cotton, thank you for presenting that for us. I, I always try to simplify these a little bit, because you can get into the percentages, but what we're really trying to do is true up to what others are making. So that's my comment. I certainly support making sure that our unrepresented employees are being fairly compensated and have similar benefits, and are at a disadvantage just because they're not in a union. I think that's a wise move to make on a regular yearly basis. I just wanted to tap into your experience. Do you have a suggestion for us how to avoid this? We could certainly, as the mayor suggests, make it more automatic and just say, you know, we, we always give the cost of living. I think councils like to take a look and see what those numbers are. Can we afford it? Is the timing right? But, so my question is, do you have a suggestion on how to avoid this in the future? So that we're, we're not partway through the year trying to catch up to a contract that's just being settled?
Yes, I do, and it's, it's a different approach. It involves council support going into a contract to hold the line. So maybe staff would do some of this legwork in advance, and through your updates about collective bargaining, have this, this conversation. And then December comes, going back, well, let's go forward to the end of the next contract. That December, have the conversation about what will be right for council for the unrepresented. And then do your best through collective bargaining to hold the line to that number for the unionized employees. That's not always successful, because there's mediation, and then there's other, you know, forces that come to bear. And then that, that, then if that happens, that there's an inequity, then you can make that up to the nonunion at a later point. So that, that's another approach that, that tends to be less complicated.
Thank you.
Great. We haven't heard from Councilmembers McHenry, Hoag, or Lingle. I see Councilmember Hoag's hand.
Oh, I appreciate your time today, Mr. Cotton, to, to chat, because I wasn't quite clear on how, how, you know, this all worked. I thought it was on top of the nine, or 0.9% that was already approved, but I guess that hadn't been given yet, so it was kind of budgeted. But so what, it does feel, I, thinking it through, it does feel like if we increase it by 4. some percent now, then at the end of the year, it'll just be compounded on top, right? So it'll be constantly, so I'm trying to figure out, is it possible to reduce it again at the end of the year before we calculate to have something upfront that we're going to be doing that? Because just making a decision then doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be, I, I think that 4% is going to be used to give more of a, an increase in 2022. If that, I don't know, I, I kind of, I understand where Councilmember Napoli's coming from, so I'm just kind of, I'm stuck, but.
So if the concern is that this would be, become a whipsaw tool for some reason, and, and it would be viewed against the city at a later point. I, I'll need to defer to others who know the employees better, but I, I have a feeling that with explanation, that will be understood. And as, as you heard, there is an intent to true up and not have that compounding effect at the end of the, end of the year. So I think 2.11% is the 10-year rolling average, something like that, which is in the biennium budget. It would be something less than that. I'm confident, unless inflation went out of control. If it did, that might be something more than that, less that compounding effect. But chances are, it'll be something, you know, less than 1%. And I'm just guessing, so anyone listening, you know, don't hold me to it. But that's, that's going to be the impact of making that adjustment at the end of the year. And if Dana is still on, she, she can chime in. But it's kind of crystal balling to give you that exact number tonight, because we just don't know what inflation is going to do for the last, next 12 months, or the next seven months.
Good evening, you know, Mason Finance Director. If the Teamsters, if the cola was 2.11 next year, then the nonrepresented would get 0.36 of a percent increase to make it even for the biennium. So our salaries would be the same as the Teamsters. So someone who is a Teamster would be making the exact same amount. So it would be a pretty small increase for next year for nonrepresented employees.
Thank you.
That, that being said, Mayor, if inflation did go out of control, I, I, I would hope that people wouldn't keep that number firmly in mind, because we'd want you to, to recognize that at that point. Assuming all things are equal, I, I agree with the math that Dana provided.
Councilmember Lingle, did you want to add to the conversation?
I, I just had a follow-up question. All these long titles, Mr. Cotton. You said that there's, you know, we have, we still also have to true up things like benefits, and that something else would be coming forward in the future. What's the, what's the timing on that, are you thinking?
I'm thinking the meeting in June, the first meeting in June, to provide you a draft of those code of ordinances changes, and they would be simply the same as what you've already seen in the Teamster contract. It's just a different format. We need to, we haven't taken the time to, to provide and put it in that format yet. So it's a, it's a 75 to 80%, and then going to 50% opt-out. And the vacation, I don't have committed to memory. If you want to know, Dana, I think, I think does.
No, I just, I mostly just wanted to know timing on that next piece, so we'd have a, have the whole package. So thanks.
And Councilmember Napoli, did you still have a follow-up?
Thank you for coming back to me. Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to have that documented, that there would be a trueing up. And I think what it would be is, it's about 1.75 would be, any future cola would be reduced by 1.75, well, just for the next year, excuse me. If, so for example, if, if the cola adjustment next year was less than 1.75, then, yeah, that would be, you wouldn't be able to true it up. It would not be possible that year. But I, I do think it should be documented, the intent to, you know, accommodate for the extra next year by not getting the full cola increase that everyone else gets. Anyway, I hope that makes sense, but I, but I do think it should be in the ordinance and made clear.
I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem, Councilmember. You know, you know how it is when we're working on these things internally with staff. Some, we, we know what we're trying to do, and sometimes it's better to just add an extra sentence or two to make it clear to council and the public, so we can definitely make that happen. So at this point, just while this is the first touch, I'm, I think we're all okay, you know, with folks, you know, waiting until the first meeting in June, or waiting at least until the next meeting, if you want to. So I would just, if there's further follow-up and question, please reach out to Mr. Cotton or Ms. Mason. She's done all the crunching in numbers. Ryan's done the, the policy side of it. And, you know, I, I do want to know personally from folks if there's going to be a strong injection of this, to please contact us before. I don't think there is, but I just want to, you know, make sure that we don't have any blindsiding of, of folks at the next meeting. And if there's any other issues you can think of, please reach out to Mr. Cotton and I, so that we can get it worked out before we come for the next touch. Oh, Councilmember McHenry, Hoag, and then Schaefer.
I just wanted to voice support for adding some of that documentation or language that Councilmember Napoli mentioned to the ordinance. And if that comes before the next meeting, that would be great, just to see that next draft.
Perfect. Councilmember Hoag?
I just want to mention that I am in favor of doing this. I just want to make sure that it's done right, so that, that's all.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
Ditto on that. I'm very much in favor of, 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 of doing this, and making sure that not only is communicated well to the community, but also to our own staff or unrepresented staff, so they understand exactly what Councilmember Napoli said, that, hey, look, this might result, or will likely result in a 1.75% decrease in your cola next, next year, just so there's no misunderstanding by, by, you know, anyone.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go and make that, that amendment, just to provide that clarification, and bring it back to the next council meeting, so thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 21-38C, approved resolution approving the 2022 to 2027 six-year transportation improvement plan for discussion and/or decision. And this is a third touch, so I believe we do have a statutory deadline as well. I think it's in June. Is that correct, Mr. Lenishewski?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So, yeah, we need to file with the state of Washington by July 1.
All right. Are there any questions on the TIP, or would council like to move it forward for approval this evening?
Mayor, just one question for the clerk. I'm not sure if it was my audio bad or hers, but there were no written submittal comments to you, right, Jenny?
That is correct, and let me just double-check my email to make sure nothing was received after, because I know we were thinking maybe the one person had audio issues, but as of this moment, I have not received any written reports or written comment.
Councilmember Napoli?
Funny coincidence, but I think it was just this morning I received a comment that had to do with this exact item. So I don't know if you want me to, to read it. I, but it's, I guess, not an official public comment, because it wasn't put through the right channels, but I'll, I'll say it says, "Is there some more info available about the proposed $2 million improvement to the intersection of Maine and Virginia? Do you know what that is? That's a lot of money. I hope it includes a roundabout like we have discussed." So anyway, it's funny, because that is the intersection that I keep complaining about. And I hope we can make a plan for that, and maybe communicate to the, to the rest of the community clearly that this is going to be a coordinated effort between the county, the state, and our city. But we do need to start making some kind of movement forward. That intersection could include acquisition of land potentially to make room for an appropriate improvement. So anyway, people in the community are paying attention, at least one is, and, and feels, you know, wants to know more information.
So Councilmember Napoli, that would count as an official public comment. So if you could forward it to the clerk, that would be great. And then if I can veer off topic just slightly, because it's connected to that, Councilmember Napoli, the King County is looking at doing a property tax for transportation in the unincorporated areas, and potentially having on that, on the ballot this year. As we all know, King County can't even maintain their roads right now, let alone to fund new projects. So that may be an avenue to help us start moving that project forward. But yes, I mean, that's, that's definitely part of internal discussion and prioritizing, and how you get the money, and what you can get done at any given time. So I'm glad you received that comment.
And Mayor, to answer the, the question at hand, there is more descriptions of the work on the actual 20-year project list that is not included in the packet, because it's just an outstanding document. Sorry, I wasn't prepared. I could have answered that more concisely. I do not believe it is a roundabout for those enthusiasts, but there's not a lot of space there. And I, I assure you, any improvement there would probably yield the collection of private.
Thank you.
But outside of that, the, the list is, is fairly intact from the preceding year. It was a little light this year in construction activity. COVID, you know, played some of that role. The development community is improving, you know, many of the items on our list, or parts thereof. So that is, that is helpful, but to be honest, does escalate what happens with us, because we then, you know, are left with a project that's incomplete, so we're kind of forced for, you know, to fill in the gap projects. So 143rd will be a really good candidate, you know, depending on how we do or don't fare on Third Avenue. But 143rd will be pretty much complete, and just a few missing sections over the next 18 months. So that will be certainly interesting to watch as it develops and, and we move forward. I don't have a lot to add. Like I said, I haven't had much comment. And I, I just saw the, the name on that, Councilmember Napoli, is, I want to say he was a planning commissioner, was he not?
I'm not sure, but I think you know him. He has provided input about the school district, the high school traffic situation.
Ah, that's where I know the name. Okay. So that's not 143rd, but yes, I have seen his name, so. Hopefully, he's enjoying the signs and the light traffic on 143rd, which is on the list.
All right. So do we have any more comments, or would, or is council ready to take a vote on this this evening? I'm seeing some nods, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council approve Agenda Bill 21-38C, approved resolution approving the 2022-2027 six-year transportation improvement program, TIP.
Second, Brad Nicky.
Okay, we have a motion by Council, or Mayor Portem Remington, and a second by Councilmember Brad Nicky to approve our TIP. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill 21-13D, I believe we were pulling this from the agenda. So let me hold on sidebar for a second. Ms. Thomas, where are we pulling this from? Or were you going to, going to provide an update? Okay, so Ms. Thomas will provide an update on the Westcott-Duval Village commercial application extension request.
All right. I meant that it was getting pulled. I thought we were on the next item after that, because they did pull it at the beginning of the meeting. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to Agenda Bill 21-30C, authorize the mayor to execute a government facilities plan contract with the consultant not to exceed the amount presented in the scope and fee estimate. Mr. Lenishewski.
Evening again, Mayor, Council, Steve Lenishewski. Councilmember Remington, I'm not sure if you want to lead the charge in this discussion, or I think, you know, what I had heard at the committee of the whole meeting is, some things needed. We think we have a little much in there. My opinion, tearing it apart probably isn't the best approach, but I think compartmentalizing some of the tasks, certainly, I think we could have a motion on, you know, embargoing any facilities inspections to Task 5, and some scoping work has been conducted, and we've come back to council to discuss the merits of the findings, and maybe the, obviously, the consultant is going to have their own recommended actions on what we should or shouldn't investigate for reuse, or expansion, or safekeeping, or whatever you put it. So I think there's a, certainly a positive step forward to keep this fairly intact, and maybe kind of condition the motion. Positive step forward to keep this fairly intact and maybe kind of condition the motion. Pulling it up here. Please feel free to. Indulge amongst yourselves.
Well, thank you, Steve. Council, the majority had, had said, let's go ahead and continue our discussion. I, I hadn't heard anyone who said they didn't want to do a facility study. It had more to do with scope. Some of the answers that you provided, I think, really helped us move. To maybe a little more comfortable place. Especially what do we do with the 600 plus thousand that was appropriated in the budget process? For the utilities building. I think we just recognize that we ought to have that part of this entire plan and not have it be separate. And you seem to really clarify that for us. Question point that Councilmember Lengel had brought up. I think there's not full agreement on exactly what buildings, but I think there's general. Agreement that while we may want to look at all of our buildings, we don't want to waste. Well, we, we don't want to spend too much time or money trying to look at earthquake retrofit in buildings that were, we know we're not going to. Do earthquake retrofit on. So in my mind, and members, please speak up to, to clarify what's on your mind. But I think just some cleaning this up a bit, Steve. Making sure that, that council has within this plan really clear direction on what we're going after. I always try to say, you know, you don't want to necessarily tell the consultant what they're supposed to do, you know? We, we want the information they provide to guide us into the future. But that general sense is that we're going to need a new city hall. And exactly when and, and how and so on is really dependent on one, some of those other key questions, including a space needs analysis. I think most of the consultants I've worked with in the past, they can walk into a building and go. Yeah, this one isn't going to work for you. Let's not spend a lot of time looking at some example of the roof and other things. But we do need a general look because many of these buildings we're going to have to maintain for years, even if we're going after a new city hall. So my take was get some, a little bit more cleanup on this, make sure that the consultants on board. It seemed like the majority were ready to, to move forward with, with the study with some minor modifications. And again, my, my own experience is, you know, even though we lay it out pretty tightly, there's still a lot of flexibility in the process. Takes a while to do these studies and. And so I think there's going to be a lot more discussion with consultants. They get in and take a look and say, yeah, yeah, we can cut this back. And so I think that there's some narrowing that could take place during the actual process. But I'll stop and I think it just encourage other council members to, to make your comments, make sure that we're providing the right direction to Steve. So that they can come back and make sure our questions have been answered. Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Portem. I just wanted to agree with a lot of what you said. And I guess my comfort level is with approving a high-end cap, you know, and letting staff work with the consultant to. Weed through some of those details and use some common sense to figure out, okay, we don't need to spend this much money here and kind of do some of that whittling down of the financial side of it. I think we've given them a lot of good feedback to work with and my feeling is that they probably have a good idea of where we're coming from and understand that. So that's my opinion on it.
Thank you. Other council members?
Councilmember Napolin and then Schaefer and Brad Nicky.
I tend to remember the order of how this process is going, but I, but I wonder if it would be helpful for the consultant to have kind of a kickoff meeting where he could. Get a better understanding of where council or the team from the consultant, a better understanding from council of what we're hoping to get out of this. And perhaps that would. Or maybe facilitate a conversation. I, I don't know. I'm just. Or at least somewhere during the process before they, they spend a bunch of. Resources in studying certain buildings that. I, I don't know. I don't know how to exactly put it into words what I'm asking for, but I, I do think it would be helpful to have some check-ins. To make sure we're headed in the right direction. And I, I can't remember if that's in the scope or if. Maybe, maybe Steve or I don't know if Sean is still here could clarify that. I, I think I would feel a little more comfortable. It feels like $300, $300,000 worth of work. When we, you know. Aren't going to be sure we're all on the same page until it's all spent. Makes me feel a little nervous.
Do you want one of us to address that, Mayor?
Yes, please. Either Mr. Tozer or Mr. Lenishewski, your choice.
Steve, would you like to go first?
You, you start.
There you went. Okay. Yeah. So sorry to, yeah, to try to address that particular question. Yes, the consultant. This is definitely something they're passionate about is consensus building and talking to councils and presenting. This is something they're very familiar with doing. And I, I want to say just in one of the tasks, there was eight separate like council meetings that I think they had budgeted for. So certainly lots of participation in that sense. And absolutely, I think the, the kind of conundrum we're in right now is how much more commitment they have before they have. A commitment from us, you know, and, and them expending more effort and time if we don't. If we're sending them signals that we may or may not have a project. And, and absolutely, I think if they know that we're moving forward and, and the process is rolling, they'd be happy to discuss this. I did go through and we tried to rewrite some of the scopes after the last council meeting. And then we had further discussion, but we had already internally kind of identified some core. Core operations facilities. And so we're already kind of categorizing out these potential and even. Lists for, you know, candidates for relocations or candidates for surplus that, you know, that would be part of a discussion early on, especially. They would absolutely have, have a council input. And that might help inform and tighten up the rest of the, the project for sure.
All right. Councilmember Schaefer, you are next.
Yeah. The, the question I have, I guess, is if we do try to reduce the scope, that's going to delay. I assume that's going to delay finalizing the contract and potentially delay the, you know, the. End, end result assessment that we're looking, looking for. Steve or Sean, what are, what are your thoughts about how long that process might take?
So I think maybe a simpler question to ask, I'll ask Mr. Tozer, partially knowing the answer is. Compartmentalizing some of the tasks. The consultants can watch this video, the beauty of recordings. They can understand the, the flavor of what they're, they're, you know, hearing from council. Like Sean said, there's plenty of touch-ins. I think again, confirming with Sean that we issued this big contract of 283, doesn't mean they get the money. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, should we choose to put a clause in this that, hey? No precedents or payments shall be added on any task until task order is issued by a city of Duval Project Manager. Simple stuff, controlled, gives us latitude to move forward, to get it started. Certainly I have no problem adding an embargo to expenditures on Task One until, you know, such time as, you know, further communication has been had with council. That's, it's going to happen anyway, but if it makes people feel better and it's a weighted blanket instead of a regular blanket, that, that's fine. So some people need the weighted blanket. My 16-year-old does. The rest of them don't. So it's different. That, I think that's reasonable. Sean, would you concur?
Yeah, I, I think the, the process, so if we had to go and re-scope the whole thing and we were rewriting it, well, then we're talking a couple more council meetings for sure. And, and I guess, I think that's why we're here where we are is, you know, do we have consensus on a contract? And I don't want to focus on the dollar amount, but you know, we know where our limits are because that's almost easier for us to scope up or down to. Rather than, well, we just want a different scope. That, that makes it very difficult. But if I, if we have some achievements and benchmarks like we talk about, that's, we can write to that for sure.
You, Councilmember Brad Nicky and then Lengel?
I wanted to first say that I do concur with Councilmember McHenry and Mayor Portem Remington. I do agree that. I'm in favor of this. We all know that. I've wanted something like this for years. But I do think that letting the staff dictate how this, I reviewed everything. It looks to me. Those details is important versus trying to shift and change and. You know, carry this process out further and further and further. I know it's difficult because it is a big ticket item, but I do recall when I first came into council over 10 years ago. And I think, I don't know if it was the economic development plan, visioning plan, but you recall Mayor, the plan that was $100,000 way back when. And, you know, it, we, we achieved the goals that were stated in that plan. And that was my first introduction to these plans. And, you know, there then came shoreline and comp plan updates. And I do recall when we were in a, a situation where we went into recession and how all the municipalities had to have extensions. Because we all couldn't, you know. Pay for the, the requirements that were mandated. And so I'm now very used to the ideas of plans and how they're sort of the genesis of like getting things going. So I don't, I'm not uncomfortable with this. I could be supporting it right now today. And I just want to put that out there because I know it can be unsettling when you look at those numbers, but when you look at a comp plan. The cost of that, the shoreline, the sensitive areas, you know, those are pretty pricey as well. But in this sense, what we're talking about is investing in something that is so absolutely necessary. And we can't really move forward. And I know that because I've been here over 10 years not moving forward. So it would be really imperative that we get through this and start that process moving forward. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lengel?
My only comment, is my off mute? Yeah. I just want to make sure that the city hall repairs are done this year. I am tired of walking into that building, knowing that the doors are not fire code compliant. I am very unhappy about the fact we have, we do not, we are not moving forward. I'm putting on ventilation in that building that is going to be HEPA compliant. I just want to know that building is going to get addressed. And I don't, we've, you know, we put money out there for it. We've approved it. I don't want it delayed. I just want to make, I don't want to be reprioritizing it. I want to get that building done. And it, you know, it is right now the place where the citizens go to get services. It is where our employees still have to work. So while we do all of this scoping, and again, I'm not so worried about the price of this thing. I just want to make sure that other priorities that we have already funded get done this year. That's what I want to be sure of. And I, I really, for two years, I've been walking in that city hall. And have to look at those doors that are not fire code compliant. And it really bothers me. And I've been on every one of these other buildings. I haven't been in Doherty Farmhouse, but I've been in all the other ones. I know what I'm looking at. We need to re-inspect them again, fine. But I don't want city hall to not get fixed this year. And I want a commitment that, that I really it from administration that it's going to get fixed.
So it is in our work plan. Yeah. And, and we're doing the best we can with the resources we have moving forward. So Steve can answer a little bit more on timeline, but this has been a priority of mine for the last four years as well. We put the money in the budget. It all boils down to capacity and getting mandatory things done. This is, this is one of the reasons why I'm trying to say that we, you know, we need to follow our parks processes and not bring on a bunch of additional projects. Because this is frankly more important to our cities. I'll say risk management long-term and having these HEPAs, you know, our HVACs that are 20-plus years replaced is a very high priority. But. We can't get it all done overnight. And so we're doing the best we can with the resources we have. With other mandatory projects as well. And we don't know what's going to happen in a month or two months or three months. So with that, I would just, you know, respectfully remind council, Councilmember Lengel will both feel very strongly about this. That every time we bring something up that has to be reviewed by Public Works, that's not on their work plan, these things move farther and farther behind. So it's really important that we stay on track with what has been approved in the budget and what's in their work plans already.
And I just want to add to that, in the budget process, that, you know, I, I put together a memo. I expressed my concerns about all the things we ask our employees to do. You know, when I use the word capacity, it's not about intellectual capacity. It's not about staff commitment. It's not about their passion. It's about sheer numbers of hours in a day. To address a CIP that is very large, considering what we have to work with. And. The, we, things keep, you know, we, we always have things moving around and I realize. There's so many demands. I, I truly understand it. I've, you know, I've been, been there, done that. But we, we, we still have a building where employees are functioning every day. And we've got to do at least a couple of safety-related things and get them done. And, and I'm, I'm really just asking very much here for one little commitment to get those couple of things done. I, I don't want to see us in another winter where the heat goes out in that building, you know? And I know you don't either, Mayor. I mean, I, I'm just saying I, it's, it's very hard for me to always see these things shifting. And have no ability to influence it. I, I mean, I'm doing my job. I'm allocating the money. I'm raising the issues around staff capacity. I just don't want to see that anymore with city hall. I don't expect to save that building. I just want to make sure the employees have a decent place to work.
We're on the same page. I would like a place to work. Just.
Our house is way too big. You can always come over here.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, very well said, Councilmember Lengel. I, I think all of us want to make sure our employees. Until we get a new facility are, are well taken care of and, and safe. I, I'll take a bit of a chance here. I, I really liked what Councilmember Napolin said about a kickoff meeting. I actually think that we'd be better off to, to get a contract signed, bring them in, have our kickoff meeting, make sure that they're absolutely clear on what we're trying to do. And, and start working with them. And, and when I say I'm taking a bit of a chance here, my, my sense is everybody supports, you know, the, you know, the one that was, the company that was selected. There were the group of folks that are selected to help us. Not, you know, none of us are, you know, I wish it was 50,000 instead of, you know, over a quarter million. I think everybody feels similar. We understand the importance. My sense is the majority of folks are, are probably ready to move forward. I have such a deep respect for each one of you, even when you disagree with, with me on something. And I don't want to jump the gun. But my sense is that we're awfully close. And, you know, Director Lenishewski, the mayor, understands what our concerns are, understands that we need to, to really work with, with our consultant and narrow this down. And so I, I, I'd like to, to call for a vote tonight. But before I do, because that has some hazard as well. If, if there's council members that said, I'm just not comfortable and I need more time, I think we should take the time. But I also firmly believe that if we move forward tonight with that contract, we can start working with, with our consultant and make sure we get this right. And that way we're moving forward in a timely fashion. And. And I think it's a good consultant and I think they'll work with us. So I just want to get a sense. From council, are, are you okay if we vote on this tonight and start, start the process moving forward?
All right. Councilmember Napolin?
I'll just be really quick. And, you know, if I'm not in support and everyone else is, that's the way it works out. And I, it's not going to offend me. I respect everyone so much that, anyway, I just want to preface it by that. But I, I do think it would be nice to have a kickoff meeting. When I'm looking at the tasks, it looks like so much of the front end of this project is doing all of the building assessments and finding deficits and all of that. And the, the vast bulk of the hours are in that portion. And so I, I think it would be helpful to have that kickoff meeting. Because honestly, I don't know that I or anyone in council or staff is the best person to help us know how to work through this process. It's honestly the consultant that I would like to help us know what order we should do this in and what makes the most sense. So it, it could waste a bunch of time for us trying to rewrite the scope when really we need a professional to help us understand maybe more what we need. when really we need a professional to help us understand maybe more what we need. I hope that makes sense. Um, so I, I, I think it, it may make sense to move forward and start working with the consultant. And, and as long as the contract is written in a flexible way that it can be adjusted as we learn more about what information we need or don't need, then I would be comfortable moving forward. But I, I'm not 100% sure exactly how the contract is written in its ability to be flexible. So that's my feedback.
Thank you. And I'm just going to go round robin, um, since Mayor Purtem's, um, trying to, to figure out if, if we've got the support tonight to move something forward, um, assuming with, with a caveat, um, and an amendment, um, to the motion. So Councilmember Birdnicki, um, would you please restate, uh, unless you've had a change of heart and, and share your new, new information?
No, I will state that I am in support of moving forward.
All right, Councilmember Langill.
I guess we're moving forward, but the, I'll say it this, it's because I know this firm and I know they'll give a really, really amazing job to the city of Duval.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, definitely in favor of moving forward.
Councilmember McHenry?
I saw Mr. Tozer raise his hand, just in case you didn't see that. I think in response to something Naplin said, but, um, I re, would just restate what I said before, which is, you know, I feel comfortable moving forward with staff working with the consultant to figure out that scope.
Okay, um, we'll go to Councilmember Hoag and then, um, then Mr. Tozer, if you have something to add, we can take your comment then.
So I am in favor, but I'm still, I, I'm still, the section one, I, I don't want that to be where we start. So I, I don't know what to do about the contract because I'm in favor if we can figure out a way to make sure that we're, they're not going to have people doing seismic studies on all our buildings tomorrow. So.
Um, Mr. Tozer? And then I have a thought, um, that might help folks.
Yes, uh, to address Councilmember Hoag's, uh, comment first. Yes, absolutely. We, we're going to talk with them about resequencing. And, uh, so what was task five? I know they're numbered, we probably should call them something else, but, uh, but we're going to do some things a little different order. So try to do some of the visioning and the space planning, which is, is obviously been very important. Do that a little ahead of time, do some of that visioning. Uh, but prior to really deep diving deep into the facilities. And then the Councilmember Naplin's point on the contracts, uh, we use our, our standard consultant contracts. And there's, there is a termination clause in any of those. At some point we could eject if, if, uh, the city or, or council or administration felt uncomfortable with the way this contract was going. We could terminate work. We could do a, a termination just per the contract. So at some point we could stop if, if somehow we ran off the rails.
So, um, I, I'm hearing support just obviously with, you know, a couple of minor changes. So my suggestion would be, um, for someone to make a motion with the caveats included so that, um, Mr. Lenishewski and Mr. Tozer can go back to the consultant and do that additional work to finalize. And I, then of course, that kickoff meeting to keep, to kind of finalize that scope of work overall. Um, there's always some flexibility within these things to make some changes. Um, so, um, it would be great to, to move, to start moving that process forward this evening um, with the caveats in your motion as well as coming back. Um, Mayor Pretend?
Yeah, I, I'd like to suggest that, uh, Councilmember Birdnicki, uh, bring this forward for approval. Uh, she's worked, uh, her entire career in council. And I, uh, I just really appreciate the heart and, uh, uh, the focus that our council members have. But, uh, I think with those caveats, uh, with the kickoff meeting, making sure that we look at a little reordering so that we can understand our space needs and focus in on what needs a seismic retrofit will be in good shape here.
Great. Um, so does someone want to make a motion with the caveats, um, included?
Sure.
All right, Councilmember, go ahead.
Okay, um, the caveats are that Public Works is responsible for reprioritizing tasks.
Pardon me, can we do it in a motion format? Motion to.
Oh, sure.
To.
Okay, so, so let's, let's practice adjusting how we do a motion. How's that? Um, I make a motion, wait a second, I gotta find the agenda bill here. Where is it? I'm flipping too many pieces of paper here now. You should see my office and my sewing room. Which is the agenda bill now, AB? Because we're amending the agenda bill, aren't we?
Um, I, I'll, I'll let legal answer for technically amending the agenda bill. I don't think we're technically amending the agenda bill. I think we're putting caveats on contract execution.
Okay, I make a motion.
I see it, however, Mr. Kenny is the legal expert of the line. I will, um, defer to him to make sure I, I'm not completely in outer space here.
Well, no motion has been made yet, so the motion can be whatever, uh, whatever the motion maker wants it to be, and then it'll be voted on. Um, so just create the full package of whatever you want it to say and you should be fine.
Well, I have to, I have to go back so many pages to just to get the amount of the contract. What is it, 289,000? Is that about right?
The, the current motion or the suggested motion says authorize the mayor to execute a government facilities plan contract with the consultant not to exceed the amount presented in the scope and fee estimate. And then you could adjust that to add your, your caveats.
Okay, I gotta find it though, in the stack of stuff in the.
Twenty-one.
Go.
Twenty-one.
I think I got it. That's Westcott, so it must be further up.
Yes.
Yeah, gotta go back up in the packet here. Where are we? Public Works tip. We're going way, way up there if I'm going to read it.
What is that?
Is it in the, is it in the cow?
No, hold on a second. Let me do this. Let me just share my screen.
Yeah, that's a better way to go.
There is the motion as it was recommended on the agenda bill. You guys can work on massaging the language now. And then when you get to a point where you like it, somebody can make the actual motion. How does that sound?
Okay. Okay, so let me just rewrite it.
If you want, you start talking, I'll start typing.
Okay, authorize the mayor to create a government facilities plan contract.
Execute.
Execute a contract with ARC in the amount not to exceed the amount presented in the scope and fee estimate. Provided that.
Hold on.
Public Works will reprioritize tasks to facilitate space planning. And, well, no, actually would be to, well, to facilitate, um, a presentation to council. We don't want to forget that, right? A presentation to council and, um, to, that presentation, counseling, space planning, become a space planning and what other specific things were people concerned about and, um.
Focus on, uh, buildings that house employees.
Yeah, there, that's a good one. Good job, Mayor. It's all those years on council.
It's all those years as a staff person as well. All right. Um, how, how do folks feel about that language? I, I feel like that kind of captures everything. All right, I'm seeing heads nod. So, um, Councilmember Langill, would you like to formally make the motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve AB 21 dash 30C as I guess amended, which authorizes the mayor to execute a government facilities plan contract with ARC and the amount not to exceed, um, as presented in the scope and fee estimate, provided that Public Works will reprioritize tasks to facilitate a presentation to council. I guess it'd be presentations to council. Space planning and, uh, repairs or focus on buildings that house employees. I think you meant repairs to buildings that. Isn't that what you meant, Mayor?
Um.
Is that what you meant?
Well, I think focus encompasses the consultant as well as.
Okay, that's fine then. I wasn't quite sure.
All right, do we have a second from council?
Second, Birdnicki.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Langill, a second by Councilmember Birdnicki. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Thank you. Um, motion passes. And, um, I just want to acknowledge this is one of the biggest things the city's done as far as our facilities. Um, it's a first time process, so there will be some learning for all of us, um, even those of us that have been around a while, um, as far as facilities go. And, um, I think that, uh, from administration, I would really appreciate, um, the conversation and being able to move this forward, um, as well as the continued opportunity to discuss, um, the status of our facilities and, and getting to a point of, um, stability and, uh, adequate workspaces for all. So thank you. Um, moving on to our last agenda item, um, and we might act, knock on wood, we might actually be done before 9:30. Uh, unfinished business, agenda bill 21 dash 47D, uh, motion to support the draft water comprehensive plan as provided by staff and the consultant team to move forward with peer agency review and processing with Department of Health in King County. Mr. Lenishewski. You're on mute.
I pushed it, but yeah.
I, I understand.
Let's just, uh, works, Sean Tozer, Project Manager is accompanying this. Uh, we, we are requesting a motion of supports for the water comprehensive plan draft as presented to be again, the peer review process. Uh, we haven't spoken about this in several months, or several meetings, sorry. Uh, Sean, did you have a quick bullet list of kind of remaining topics?
Uh, I did a quick summary here of just some of the items and the summary's all in the end. Uh, let's see, there you go. So ob- obviously, good, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, happy to still be here. I'm Sean, City of Duval Public Works. I'll try to make sure you get out at 9:30 on the dot. Uh, again, you, a lot of you guys are familiar, we've had a lot of discussions about the comprehensive water system plan. You, you, you all are familiar with what it's, what it's made of, the plan elements, a lot of the details involved. Um, these are some summary slides from before. Uh, again, a lot of this work is, is prescriptive. It's, it's told to us what we will accomplish and, and, and we conform to the requirements of the Department of Health. Uh, this plan will have a 10-year period, so it'll be active for 10 years instead of the standard six. That was a newer requirement. One of the big achievements of this plan is to come up with our water system improvements or capital improvement program and list that really drives rates along with obviously consumption and, and, uh, the actual cost of water itself. Uh, so just to look, recap really fast the discussions. We were here on, on February 20, February 2nd for a presentation, the initial introduction. And then FCS group came on February 16th to discuss the water utility rate study. That was followed up on February 26th with a staff report that had supplementary information generally regarding the financial calculations and what that included. Uh, on March 2nd, there was another cow presentation on the water system plan. And again, on March 26th, supplementary information, which included the, the draft of chapter 10, the financial chapter, and then also some of the cost estimating appendices and, uh, some additional financial documents. Other than that, as Steve mentioned, we have not been talking about this for, for a little bit. There was some Public Works Committee discussion, um, but again, not generally to council as a whole. So, and right now, this is sort of where we're at. This, this schedule has obviously slipped a little bit just due to some of the more reviews and just more time that has taken. Uh, but again, we'd like to get these, this draft, this particular draft that you have, uh, you've received out to the agency reviews this month. We can probably expect a six to eight week timeframe for them to review and then send comments back to us. And then probably an additional four to six weeks for us to address those comments. And then following that, we would do adoption of the plan and then submitting it to Department of Health for final approval. And that is where we are in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Tozer. Um, does anyone have any, uh, questions for Mr. Tozer? Councilmember Langill? You're on mute.
Stay there. Um, uh, actually I want to share a comment I, uh, some information, a comment I made to, uh, uh, our director there. Um, one of the things we're seeing in land use is the repercussions of plans that are adopted where, uh, subsequent actions have been taken and then they're not documented in the plan. And specifically in the, uh, building lands capacity work we've been doing, there was an appendix by an outside consultant dated March of 2020, which states that the city of Duval does not have any, um, infrastructure needs to handle all of its future growth. I mean, it is very clear what they're saying and there's, and it's taken out of something that was probably done by Public Works back in 2015. And I'm not picking on Public Works or anything here. But my point here is that information carries over into other future documents. And then it gets very hard to untangle. And in the case of the water, uh, plan, we know that in the last budget cycle, we added staff. We've also appropriated funds for other kinds of improvements to our system that are actually recommended in this plan. So what I suggested, or I'd like to see in the plan, or maybe it's in an introduction or something that bound as part of the plan, is, is language that addresses subsequent events that have occurred since they did the study specifically related to the budget actions that we, that were proposed by administration and the council supported. Um, and the reason I say that is I don't want years to go by and then people think that we didn't, somebody reads the plan and thinks that we didn't add the staff that we added. And, you know, those were hard fought battles, uh, as we know, over some of those positions. A lot of, lot of compromise and difficulty getting some understanding. So, um, I think that's appropriate. Um, and I think it's a way to make it clear that we've already spent some money that's being on items that are actually included in their analysis. It's, we've already appropriated the funds. So I'd like to see something like that. And I previously shared those thoughts with, uh, our director.
Yeah, and, and my, my apologies, I, that, Steve and I have talked about that. And there is a, uh, submit a letter that will accompany this document to these peer agencies. And we can, we, we, he already drafted up, or you drafted up a paragraph that we were going to.
Oh, I didn't draft it.
Okay.
Administration, administration job.
We, we had talked.
Policy comment.
Yeah, along with, along with the introductory items, we were going to kind of recap some accomplishments and things like that. So we'll make sure to address that as well. I hope that answers the question.
Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, I just have kind of the same comments I've had before. And I, I don't know that I've seen anything in the actual water comp plan. And I'm, I'm concerned that that, it's the water comp plan that people will look at. And so any submit a letter or things like that, it, it's not gonna, people may not know that that even exists when they go back and try to reference the water comp plan. And, and the issue I have is that we've invested a lot of money on efficiencies and the capital facility, that the plan for the, uh, CIP for the water system includes additional efficiencies, quite a few. And when you look at the staffing, um, estimates, there's no acknowledgement of that. We've been using the same per account, um, per water hookup amount of hours 10 years ago now, 10 years from now. And yet we keep investing on all, in all of these efficiencies and new technology and just an unbelievable amount of investment trying to, like I said, create efficiencies. And I, I just don't see any acknowledgement in the document of that, that that could impact future staffing. And I, I would just like to see an acknowledgement of that. Um, and I, I've seen and I read a few other water comp plans, just scanned it. And a lot of them do make that some kind of statement like that, that, you know, we're investing in different types of meters there. And it would in, impact the, the staffing requirements. So that's my request. And I, I've said it many times, so I don't know.
Great. Thank you, councilmember Naplin. And I think the submittal letter, you know, while it's not it doesn't have to be included with the document. I don't see normally, those are those are often things that are included in the posting of those documents. And there are public records, so they do exist. So I don't think there would be a problem attaching that to the front of the plan or as an appendix when it's finalized included on the website. That's that's not an issue at all. Councilmember Naplin?
Just super quick follow up. I think the concern is there's an entire section in the financial, maybe it's not the financial. There's a, there's a section that talks about future staffing needs and the appropriate place to acknowledge that these staffing needs are are based on the current system, not on efficiencies that can are planned to be added. I think the appropriate place to acknowledge that is in the document. It seems kind of bizarre to put that in a submittal letter. Where it belongs is where you're projecting future staffing needs, and that's in the comp plan.
Mr. Lenaszewski or Mr. Tozer, do you want to address that?
Sure. So yeah, just pulling the document up. Understanding this councilmembers, you know, councilmember Naplin's thoughts on staffing. It is, it is a, it is a document in time today. I get her point of, hey, as as things become more efficient, obviously staffing will will adjust accordingly. You know, we, we have put things into the budget as as adopted. Things are not yet enacted or moving, you know, for reasons or another. And Mayor, do we need a motion to extend? It's nine thirty.
Yes, we do. So I'd like to entertain a motion to extend this evening's meeting.
Make a motion to extend.
Do you have a second?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
All right, so we have a motion by councilmember Lengel, a second by councilmember Hoag to extend our meeting. Any discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Mr. Lenaszewski, please continue.
Bottom line, I would imagine it wouldn't be that difficult to add a sentence again. Staffing needs are a snapshot in time at the creation of this plan. However, as as efficiencies are brought about either through technology or things that don't even exist yet, obviously staffing will be relooked at at that time. Something fairly simple. Reasonable, but yes. We always want to get a lot done. I know with councilmember Lengel's always eight months, like, hey, there's too much in here. You guys are out of your minds. So we get that. Process doesn't make it any easier. We've been working with Mr. Kenny on trying to facilitate, you know, acquisition of the telemetry system, which it's mostly intellectual. So it's not just like going out and buying eighty-seven pieces and parts and putting them together. So it's laws in in reality don't make our jobs simple. That is probably one of the more complicated ones because of intellectual property. It's do you consider design build, you know, small agencies, projects under ten million can't be designed builds. There's just lots to consider. So with that said, yes, I think we could probably add a sentence. I'm just trying to look at the, we'll look at where would fit in the employment area. But yeah. I hear what you're saying. I know councilmembers tact is like, hey, we're not saying you're going to get X amount of people. But hey, look at the technology, look at efficiencies. We know where we've stuck about over the last eight months in this discussion. And I, you know, we've had it several times. So I'm well aware of that. I think a sentence is likely.
Um, any other councilmembers have any feedback? Councilmember McHenry?
I'm, I support putting that sentence in if Director Lenaszewski sees a place to add some verbiage there. I was just wondering. I know there's a timeline here, or was this something you would add? We would look at it again and it would come back? Or is it something that we're going to motion in an amended way and add it now?
I don't know that you actually need to amend anything. But one thing I would also make sure if we're going to add that, that we also acknowledge the flip side is that, yes, you know, we do plan to invest in more efficiencies in the future, but that all depends on budget approval. So not only do the staffing levels change based on efficiencies that we invest in, they may change based on efficiencies that are not invested, and they may stay more consistent with the plan. Conversely, they may also either stay stable or change due to new regulations and mandates on the city for operation of our water system. So there are multiple, you know, multiple angles there that can change what we're looking at over the course of this plan. It's not just about efficiencies. It's also about what if they're not funded and what if new mandates come down the pipeline that require additional staff work to to achieve. So I just want to, you know, just put that out there as the point of information that you might want to be a little more expansive in that statement. Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to drive this to a point. I think what is happening here is councils, I'm hoping this is what we are, we council is directing, don't take that as a hard word, but council is directing that there be language inserted in two different locations in the plan. And administration will assure that that be completed. And then we can proceed here. I think that councilmember Naplin has said she wants something in the language that clarifies the staffing assurances or assessments. I've suggested something in conditions subsequent. If everybody is cool with those two concepts and administration accepts that direct council direction, which we're allowed to do in policy, then we should just proceed. That's what I think we should just do. Does that make sense? Am I rambling now because it's nine thirty? Probably.
I think it was pretty clear, councilmember.
Does that work for everybody?
Staffing needs are seven point three point six. I think, again, even though our consultant's been ready to rock and roll, we'll make that adjustment. I struggle on councilmember Lengel's topic as insertion into like the introduction. You know, it's, it's, it's more of a per fact document. The letter of introduction, I get that as it goes around, we could do that.
That's fine.
There, but it's just a little goofy in the beginning, so.
Hey, your boss, the mayor, said that she could make sure that letter is included in that document somewhere, whatever you're doing. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that it's embedded by reference in that document. And so hopefully somebody reads that piece.
Right.
In ten years, I won't be here to tell.
All right. So with that, I think we have a clear understanding. You can choose to make a motion as is with the understanding that we've have come to an agreement for those inclusions, or you can amend your motion to specify that. But being at the nine forty hour, if there isn't any further discussion, I would like to counsel to move forward with this item.
And Mayor, I think it's clear the word draft is in the water comprehensive plan. Motion of support is a draft document, so I think it's fine to make minor edits.
Is someone ready to make a motion? Mayor Pretten?
Is he there?
You're on mute, Mayor Pretten. This is one reason not to go past nine thirty.
Breaking them up. I just wanted to make a comment and then I'll make the motion. So Steve, just to clarify on the language, we're looking at inserting language, recognizing the staffing that the staffing increases that were approved in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget process. Is that what I'm hearing from council? I just, we talked about inserting language. I just want to make sure that we're clear. That that's what we're looking at.
What? Well, I think there were two things, weren't there? Councilmember Naplin wanted some language embedded in the document, which is what Steve's looking at right now.
Okay.
And then there's sort of the more general statement in the transmittal about, you know, the actions that have been taken, which go beyond staffing. They have to do with, you know, all the other efficiencies that we have pursued since two thousand and eighteen, yada, yada. It's just trying, I mean, it's, it's as we're doing in land use, we are trying to create guideposts for future people to see where we don't lose play, track of where we are.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I think that's, Steve, you've got where we're going. Well, Mayor, with that, I'll go ahead and recommend that council approve agenda bill twenty-one forty-seven D. Motion to support the draft water comprehensive plan as provided by staff and the consultant team to move forward with peer agency review and processing with Department of Health in King County.
Second, Schaefer.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pretten Remington and a second for councilmember Schaefer. I think we've had enough discussions, so I won't ask for any unless you speak up. But all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we do not have any further business. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.